Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transect the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge the flag. Here to do the honors is Erin Lynn, our school board student representative.
Hello, okay. Good morning, school board members and superintendent Dr. Mitchell. My name is Erin Lynn. I am a senior at Woodside High School and I am also the student representative to the Newport News School Board. So, I would like to, as we begin the new school year, I would like to share a poem written by Dr., by Mr. Ralph Waldo Emerson, and the title is called "Success." What is success? To laugh often much, to win the respect of intelligent people and the affection of children, to earn the appreciation of honest critics, endure the betrayal of false friends, to appreciate beauty, to find the best in others, to leave the world a bit better, whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or redeemed social condition, to know that even one life has breath easier because you have lived, to succeed and please, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Erin. And I'll also just take this moment to thank Erin for spending time with us over the past couple of weekends. We've had some civic responsibilities with parades and things that the board has participated in, and Erin has been right there with us. So, thank you. We appreciate your dedication and time. The next item on our agenda is school board recognition. So, Dr. Mitchell, please join me at the podium.
I have the honor of presenting this month's recognitions. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association, or the V S B A, recognizes media associations and reporters for providing valuable information to the community about public schools. The media honor roll recognizes representatives who provide balanced and accurate information. Media representatives are nominated for this recognition by the local school board and named to the media honor roll presented by the Virginia School Boards Association. This evening, on behalf of the Newport News School Board, we are pleased to recognize the 2023 inductee, WTKR News Three. Present this evening to accept this recognition on behalf of the News Three team is Allison Herman, the news director of WTKR and WGNT. Ms. Herman, please come forward. Ms. Herman is being presented with a special resolution signed by each member of the school board. It reads, "Resolution of Recognition Naming WTKR News Three to the 2023 Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll. Whereas public schools are shaped by the community to provide the most appropriate and effective education for the children who attend those schools, and whereas public schools are dependent upon the community's support, including identifying and setting goals for the education of students, establishing successful volunteer, booster, and mentor programs in schools, providing annual funding of operations, and in electing qualified school board members. And whereas much of the community's knowledge and opinions about public schools rely on responsible reporting by local media representatives who decides which news to share and with the community and how much attention will be focused on various issues. And whereas WTKR News Three provides accurate and balanced coverage of Newport News School Board meetings, school division news, events, and athletic programs, and the successes achieved by students and staff. And whereas WTKR News Three is committed to highlighting positive community stories through its Positively Hampton Roads coverage and News Three Everyday Hero Awards program. And whereas WTKR Three has supported local literacy efforts through its If You Give a Child a Book campaign, and ensured local educators and students receive much-needed educational materials through its Clear the List School Supply Drive for Teachers and the Backpack Blitz for Kids. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newport News School Board places WTKR News Three on the statewide media honor roll, calling attention to the television station's ongoing responsible and balanced coverage and support of our community's schools, students, and staff. In witness thereof, we are here to set our hands this 19th day of September, 2023. Congratulations and thank you very much. We appreciate it. We're gonna grab a picture. And Ms. Herman, we express our appreciation to the WTKR news team for their balanced approach to sharing with the community both the challenges facing our schools and our students' success. So, please share this acknowledgement with the entire team and thank you for coming. In 2020, the Virginia Board of Education launched the Exemplar Performance School Awards to recognize high student achievement and continuous improvement. The awards program recognizes schools for exceeding state accreditation standards, narrowing achievement gaps, and making progress toward equity and access and opportunity for all students. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize two Newport News schools that earned recognition in this program. Discovery STEM Academy and Greenwood Elementary School earned 2324 Virginia Board of Education Exemplar Awards for Continuous Improvement. The Exemplar Award for Continuous Improvement is awarded to schools that demonstrate an increase in the combined pass rate for math, reading, and science tests for each of the past three years, or to schools who have increased in the combined rate for two or more student groups in reading and math for each of the three preceding years. These awards represent a collaborative effort among educators, students, and families. Present this evening to accept the recognition on behalf of the Discovery STEM Academy school community are several members of their leadership team. Please join us in congratulating Principal Travis Humble. Mr. Humble, please come forward. Kindergarten lead teacher Elizabeth Guthrie. First grade lead teacher Elena Shorter. Second grade lead teacher Mara Benson. Our third grade lead teacher Samantha Mikoycheck, I hope I said that correctly, was unable to join us, so I think we might have third grade teacher Callie Malanzo. Thank you for representing the third grade team. And the fourth grade lead teacher was unable to join us this evening, and that's Bradley Farah. And also, the fifth grade teacher also had a conflict, our fifth grade lead teacher, Deandra Polanco. But please join us in welcoming Special Education Lead Teacher Sandra Smith. And Related Arts Lead Christine Hood. And Discovery STEM Academy is well on its way. This is the third time that the school has earned a Continuous Improvement Award. So, please join me in another round of congratulations for this team. Take a picture? Okay. Also earning a 2223 Board of Educational Exemplar Award for Continuous Improvement is the Greenwood Elementary School community. Please join us in congratulating Assistant Principal Jamika Davis. The principal Ethel Francis is a little under the weather this evening, but we know she's watching and present in spirit. Please also congratulate kindergarten lead teacher Hannah Hots. First grade lead teacher Amy Daniel. And the third grade lead teacher Anita West Scott was unable to be present, and I'm not sure if Deborah Glover is here to represent. Okay. All right, so we congratulate the second grade lead team as well. And please welcome third grade lead teacher Sandra Van Lelevelt. I had to pause a little bit, Ms. Herman. And fourth grade lead teacher Heather Shalabo Garcia. Fifth grade lead teacher Chelsea Mysinger. Our Special Education Lead Teacher Marika Jones. And the Related Arts Lead Teacher Lisa Chambers. Just would like to say, actually give the Greenwood Elementary School Community Team one more round of applause. Congratulations on this continuous improvement award. And this is, this is a prestigious award, as you know. It's very difficult to show continuous improvement. And so, for the 2322-23 school year, just 93 schools in Virginia earned this award, so we're very proud of these two schools. Please join us in another round of applause for both schools. Again, congratulations to all of our honorees this evening, WTKR Channel Three, Discovery STEM Academy, and Greenwood Elementary School. This concludes the recognitions for this evening. At this time, we're gonna take about an eight-minute break, so the honorees and their families may leave if you choose to do so. You're certainly welcome to stay. During this time, our viewing audience will have the opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about eight minutes. Thank you.
Last week, students arrived for the first day of school. With a wonderful blend of excitement and anticipation, students across Newport News Public Schools were greeted warmly by enthusiastic educators. And with increased security measures at all schools, students have a safe environment to grow academically, emotionally, and socially. New Superintendent Dr. Michelle Mitchell and Chief Academic Officer Dr. Kip Rogers took time during the week to visit every school in Newport News, greeting students and thanking educators for their great work. Huntington is rising. After years of being vacant, historical Huntington Middle School is experiencing a revitalization. Newport News Public Schools in the city of Newport News hosted a community event to celebrate the next chapter. Elected officials, school leaders, city representatives, Huntington alumni, and an invested community attended the outdoor event to unveil the plans for a state-of-the-art middle school and the southeast community resource area, to include a public library, community center, sports features, and a splash pad. Through a strong partnership between the city of Newport News, Newport News Public Schools, and the community, this new school will build on the proud legacy of Huntington that began in 1920. And even though the building will be different, the school will still be a source of pride for the community, where the students, staff, and neighbors will add their own chapters to the historic stories of success at Huntington. Before students arrived for their first day, weeks of preparation and hard work at each school set the stage for a smooth start. And for the 16th year, freshmen from Christopher Newport University lent a helping hand. An ongoing Christopher Newport Welcome Week tradition is Day One of Service, where incoming freshmen spend one of their first days as college students, volunteering and serving their new community. With service being one of the four pillars of a rounded Christopher Newport education, first-year captains are given this opportunity to become a force for good in the world. The day is organized by CNU Center for Community Engagement, who assists students in building community partnerships as they grow into civic-minded leaders. This year, almost 500 students served a range of community organizations and nonprofits across the peninsula, including over 20 schools in Newport News. Painting welcome signs, organizing learning materials for teachers, beautifying outdoor landscapes, and helping educators set up their classrooms were just a few of the important tasks these college students were involved in. CNU faculty, upperclassmen, service scholars, and student leaders played a guiding role at each site while encouraging the students to use this time to bond with their new classmates. With far-reaching benefits, Day One of Service plays an important role in transforming our local community and beyond. Discovery STEM Academy and Greenwood Elementary School have been recognized by the Virginia Board of Education for exceeding academic requirements. Both were among 93 schools across the Commonwealth to earn the 2022-2023 Exemplar Award of Continuous Improvement. This is awarded to schools that exceed board-established requirements or show continuous improvement on academic and school quality indicators. Over the past three years, both schools have increased their standards of learning test pass rates in multiple subjects and increased their combined pass rates by double digits. Thanks to the dedication and hard work of skilled educators, students, and families, these school communities have made great efforts to create an atmosphere of success and continual academic achievement. School leaders and elected officials came together to discuss effective measures to support students and educators. Congressman Bobby Scott, the ranking member of the U.S. House Committee on Education and the Workforce, visited Washington Middle School, where he attended when it was an elementary school. After the tour, local elected officials, advocates, and school leaders from different cities across Hampton Roads sat down to talk about Congressman Scott's Rebuild America's School Act of 2023. Newport News Public Schools was strongly represented by advanced leadership and school board members. The purpose of this federal investment is to repair, replace, and upgrade public school facilities to support students' learning and protect the health and safety of both students and school staff. During the summer months, the great outdoors becomes the classroom for high school students looking to fulfill their graduation requirements in physical education. Outdoor education is a three-week course offered through two sessions during the summer months, with a focus on various outdoor skills to enhance both mental and physical well-being. Outdoor education inspires students to experience physical education in a new and exciting way. This past summer, 89 students participated in outdoor education, where skilled educators first complete specialized training to confidently and safely guide students through daily excursions. Each morning, buses transport students to Newport News Park, where they fill their day with hiking, boating, fishing, archery, camping skills, and a variety of outdoor experiences. After completing Outdoor Education 1, students are welcome to enroll in Outdoor Education 2, which offers even more exciting adventures such as a day-long canoe trip, extended kayaking, and an overnight camping trip, where students work together to set up their campsite and prepare their own outdoor dinner. Community partners offer even more unique experiences. Students learned aquatic safety, water rescue techniques, and played underwater games with the trained staff at Bredingham Midtown Aquatic Center. And the James River Association took students on scenic kayak trips around the waters near historic Jamestown settlement. By completing outdoor education courses, high school students have the opportunity to satisfy their health and physical education graduation requirements in the summer, earning half a credit for each course completed. This approach creates more room in their schedules for rigorous courses of study during the school year as they work towards an Advanced Studies diploma, while also learning skills, safety practices, responsibility, teamwork, and self-awareness in an engaging outdoor classroom.
To begin the business of the evening, the superintendent has shared draft procedures related to the treatment of transgender students with board members. Counsel to the board has indicated that the procedures are consistent with the 2023 model guidelines approved by a V D O E, Virginia Department of Education. Final edits will be made to the procedures based on board member input, so I have garnered the input of the board to make this a priority, and the expectation is that the procedures will be approved by the superintendent within the next few days, and then we will present those to the public in a format. So, we're gonna move on to, during our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comment cards via email up until 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers it an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, I'll ask you to come forward. We have about 20-plus cards this evening, so we're going to take the first 10 or so, and then we're gonna move on with the remainder of our agenda so that families who've tuned in to hear the back-to-school reports and such, they will have the opportunity to do so, and then we'll pick up with the comments thereafter. Okay? So, the first one that we have is Michelle Nordine.
For those who don't know me, my name is Michelle Nordine, and I'm the Newport News Council of PTA's president. The purpose of a council is to foster communication between and among PTAs and parent volunteers within a single school division to share best practices, respond to common concerns, be a voice for parents, provide parent educational resources, and advocate locally with their school board for policies and resources that improve family engagement and student success. I want to give you an update on PTAs in our school district and talk a little bit about the PTA. Last year, we had 24 active PTAs. This year, we have two brand-new PTAs at an Achievable Dream Academy and Virtual Learning Academy at Point Option. We have an additional nine PTAs in the process of restarting. This will give us 35 PTAs in the school district this year.
Yes.
This year, the Newport News Council is focusing on increasing our PTA membership. Last year, we only had 1,750 PTA members across all of our PTAs. As of today, we have 1,338 PTA members.
Great.
I am here to ask for your help and the community's help to increase our PTA memberships across our district. Before I go into detail on how you can help, I would like to briefly share some information. What a lot of people don't know is that each PTA must pay dues to Virginia PTA and National PTA, which total $3.75 per member. These dues are used for Virginia PTA and National PTA to help advocate on our behalf. I always summarize this as, we are paying Virginia PTA and National PTA to talk to our legislators so we don't have to. The more PTA members we have, the more Virginia PTA and National PTA can advocate for us at the state and national level. We need the community's help to support our mission. The PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. People in our communities can help by becoming a PTA member at a school in their neighborhood. Being a PTA member does not require you to volunteer. If you want to volunteer, that is fabulous, great, all the positive adjectives put in that sentence. If you don't have time to volunteer, you can still be a PTA member. We would classify you as a support member. A support member represents people in the community or school who support the mission of the PTA and support the advocacy, activities, and resources the PTA provides. There are several benefits of having a PTA at our schools. Research has shown that children perform better when parents are engaged both at home and at school. I'm running out of time. Parental involvement boosts student achievement. Our schools benefit by having, the PTA provides support for teachers and administrators. The PTA strives to create a positive and caring atmosphere in the school for all children. Here are just a few ways the PTA advocates for our children. Standards of quality, mental health, building modernization, special education, school nutrition, literacy instruction, school nurses, and access to student data. I am currently in a working group to help the Virginia Department of Education build a better portal for parents to have access to helpful information about your students. Council is running two membership challenges this year. Our first challenge is called Put the T in PTA. This challenge is aimed at having 100% teacher and administrator...
Just a little long. Go ahead.
Okay. Administrator PTA membership at each school with the PTA. The first school to achieve this at each level, at the elementary, middle, and high school, will receive a traveling trophy with their name on it. We are hoping to make this happen. We are hoping to make this a yearly competition to see which schools can win this trophy. Our second challenge is where the community and families come in. Council will give a monetary award to the PTA at each level who has the most PTA members. This challenge runs from August 28th to February 29, 2024. So please become a PTA member to not only support the PTA mission, but to also help your child's PTA, your neighborhood PTA, or your alumni PTA when the council's called a membership challenge and help all of our children in our schools. Thank you so much for letting me go over.
Thank you. Ms. Nordine, thank you for your dedication to our PTA program in Newport News Public Schools. So thank you for that. The second person is, I believe this is Kiwana Warren.
Good evening, school board members. Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, and congratulations to you. I just had three concerns. One is our spare population. I'm a special education teacher. Our students are placed in the wrong class setting. More should be done to correct this problem. And in terms of special education, we speak in data. So we do have data that a lot of our kids are placed in the wrong classroom setting, and we would like to have this situation corrected immediately if possible. The second thing is school safety. Our classrooms are overpopulated. Some of our primary grades have twenty-six to thirty-one kids. Parents are complaining directly to school board members and administrative employees, and this complaint in most cases is being used as a threat. How can we teach when we are constantly threatened by parents, students, and in some cases, our administrators? Lastly, accountability measures. Could the district provide some type of transparency when it comes to our district leaders? We still have some of our district leaders that are positioning themselves to not know the seriousness of issues that are going on in their buildings. They're dodging serious concerns in our buildings, and it's becoming a major issue. And it's also becoming a safety issue. So how can we continue the rest of the school year to provide a safe classroom environment? How can we effectively teach our students if we have students placed in the wrong classes? How can we effectively teach students if we're constantly threatened with the threats of school board, admin, and administration? So please take our concerns, take them seriously. We need someone that we can trust. We need someone who can go straight to our wonderful superintendent, and we need someone that would be there for us. My tagline has been, I don't need friendship, I need leadership. And we need your leadership. Thank you.
Larry Elliott.
Hello.
Evening, everyone. Yes, my name is Larry Elliott. I am a resident here in Newport News and pretty much native veteran, and I just want to take the time to speak to the board here to say that we would like to continue for you to press in and embrace the change in saying of replacing the current Northam holdover policies and the policy JB-P with the entirety of the Yonkin administration revised 2023 model policies on transgender issue in our schools. These revised issues are not just incremental improvements. We would like them to be a vital step of going forward in the future. Is that we want the environment where our educators no longer feel pressured to deceive or hide information from parents, especially when it concerns their children, exploration of gender identity in school. We need a system where parents are not only notified, but also given the chance to voice their concerns before any counseling regarding gender is provided to their children. These policies make it crystal clear that our schools cannot and should not infringe upon the rights of employees or students to uphold their faith and conscience. We must protect every individual's freedom to speak words that align with their deeply held beliefs. Can we come together uniting our commitment to creating a more transparent, inclusive, and respectful educational environment for all? Let's see, and it's time to replace the current Northam holding policies and the JB-P with the entirety of the Yonkin administration revised model. And I'd like to say that I think this is very important to go into in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanisha Press.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tanisha Press. This isn't the first time I've been up here. On August 26, 2021, I stood before the school board. Some of the faces have actually changed, and I spoke a warning. I asked for you all to reject the state transgender policy, or God would remove his hedge of protection over Newport News Public Schools. Unfortunately and despite the warning, the school board decided to reverse that course of action, and we rejected God's ways. In September of 2021, two seventeen-year-old students were wounded, when a fifteen-year-old boy fired shots and cried at highway, high school hallway. Two months after that shooting, an eighteen-year-old student fatally shot a seventeen-year-old in a parking lot after a high school game. In January 2023, a teacher was shot by her own first-grade student. All of that innocent blood is on our hands, and that's not a coincidence, but that's rather a consequence of our own rebellion. But the people have spoken, and Governor Yonkin has overturned our poor judgment. Last month, we heard from our superintendent that she intends to make any necessary changes to the current policy to align with the new model policy. However, we've not seen it added to our current agenda. So I'm begging you, please replace the current Northam policy with the entirety of the Yonkin administration revised 2023 model policy on the transgender issues in schools. Remove all languages, encouraging educators to deceive or hide information from parents. Make it clear to parents that they're notified, given an opportunity to object before counseling regarding gender. Make it clear schools can't constitutionally compel employees and students to speak words that violate their faith or their conscience. Please understand that delayed obedience is in fact disobedience. No amount of student resources, student resource officers, clear backpacks, metal detectors, that's not enough. We need to return to God and His ways with all of our heart, all of our soul, and all of our strength. The school board, you are in a very unique position to lead this community into the ways of righteousness. Do not risk further calamity. Thank you.
Darren Pittman. Darren Pittman, there he is.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Darren Pittman. I second her. We are in interesting times, and I know I've spoke this before. We have been given a great deal of responsibility. You know, you're elected by the people, many of you, and you're expected to serve the people. We are asking, no, we're not even asking any longer. We're telling you to serve righteously. I understand that we're taking a look at the procedures when it comes to the model policy. I don't even know if we've even adopted the procedures. I don't know if this room here knew that you support the 2023 model policy before we actually voted on it. We're telling the people that we're waiting on the superintendent. I think we're passing the buck. It's time to do what is right and stop being intimidated by politicians. Please adopt the 2023 model policies for the sake of the children.
Jonathan Waldrum. Waldrum.
Waldron.
Okay, thank you.
If you are here to advocate for the 2023 Yonkin policies, could you stand up for a second? Thank you. So I'm also here to advocate for the acceptance in its entirety of the 2023 model policies, and appreciate you taking the time to look at them and to hear that the draft is consistent with them. But what I'd like to know is, will the draft be available to the public prior to the next school board meeting? I'd like to know if there'll be any explanation given for where and why the policy strays from the model policies? And I ask that because you say they're consistent, but if we're not adopting them in their entirety, where does the wording stray? So it's nice to hear they're consistent, but then if they were, I would imagine that we'd just be adopting them. So I have that question. Besides that, I've said before at the last meeting, you know, we definitely want to see language removed that encourages educators to deceive or hide information from parents. We want to make it clear that parents must be notified and given an opportunity to object before counseling regarding the transgender issue. And we want to make it clear that schools cannot constitutionally compel employees or students to speak words that violate their faith or conscience. That was all I had, and I am a Newport News resident and business owner. Forgot to say that beforehand, but that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Kunsday? I'm not sure if there's, it's not clear. I think this is K-N-E-S-S-A-T-Y?
Crisati. My name is Sarah Crisati. I am a product of the Newport News Public School System. Good evening. I wasn't even supposed to be here talking, but my sister filled out the card because they told her to. But I do have to say that we are in favor, true. We are in favor of Governor Yonkin's bill, and we are in favor of our children get the best education that they can. They're the most important thing that we have on this earth, and they are God's children, and they are not to be sold, they are not to be treated poorly. They need to learn, they need their ABCs, they need their math, and they need their science to learn so that they can grow up to be responsible citizens. They are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephleen Puckett. Last name Puckett. Oh, she did. Okay. Russell Evanson. Russell Evanson.
Thank you, Newport News Award, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you for answering the question that you are looking at. Thank you for your email that let me know that last week that you guys are working on it, looking at the revised models. I just have to say, second and amen and yes to those other voices that have spoken to you tonight, please consider very strongly adopting the 2023 policy model in its entirety as it is. It's kind of like copy, cut, paste, and it's pretty simple, and we just want to encourage you to do that. As you well know, it is the law now, as accepted by Virginia Department of Education, and our Attorney General of the State has said, not only is it common sense, but it's the law. So we want to really encourage you guys. I know you have a tough job. I know there's a lot of external voices that pull on all of us both ways, and your job is very difficult to try to satisfy, and please, everybody, we understand that. But please, for the sake of our children and our parental rights, I don't want to be repetitions of everybody else, but please, support this. And as it is, the model came from Governor Yonkin's office and through the Virginia Department of Education, so thank you for doing that. And I can't help but say this as a pastor, we are very much in prayer for you folks. We realize our community lifts you up in prayer, and I would like to offer you, I told you that we were prayer-walking the schools. We prayer-walked Newport News, Hampton, York County, Gloucester, Procoso, Seaford, all of the, oh, excuse me, all of the Tidewater or Hampton Road schools in the area. We had fifty people show up on that Saturday to do it, and I'm so proud of the groups and other churches helped us and join us. So all of you have been prayed for, all the schools have been prayed for, all the teachers, admin, and students, and parents, and bus drivers, and everybody else that goes with the whole school system has been prayed for, and we will continue to do that. And I want to leave with you, this is a book that we use called Reclaiming a Generation, written by a woman, is a twenty-one-day prayer guide praying for the whole entire school system. So I want to just leave this as a gift for you. There's ten copies. I didn't see my buddy, Ms. Buffalo, tonight. I don't know what's happened, she's sick, but I'll leave it with them. Whether this gentleman gets one or not, that's up to y'all to decide, but there are ten here, and I want to give them to you and leave it with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Albert Timonello.
Dr. Mitchell and School Board, thank you. And I've changed my comments significantly here, and thank you for what you're about to do. The only thing I want to say is that I've been a resident of the Peninsula for forty-five years. Obviously, I'm a senior citizen, and during that time here, I've seen and witnessed in your total departure of our Christian values and mores that we grew up with as children. So I'm here to urge you to sign the 2023 model policies, and thank you for where you are in that process now and to incorporate them as they have been presented to you. So thank you very much, and with God's help, you will succeed as a school board. Thank you.
So for this last set, we'll do Amanda Roche-Lou.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Roche-Lou, and I'm the co-director of Speak Up Newport News. Even with the previous statements concerning the board's upcoming actions concerning the transgender policy, I'd still like to state the following. I stood at this podium a month ago and asked that this policy, the policy JBP, be adjusted to align with the revised 2023 model policies that have been issued by Governor Yonkin's Education Department. I am here again to reiterate the same. I'm not asking for revisions that only reflect parts of the new policy. I'm asking that the current policy be updated to reflect Yonkin's policy in their entirety. In 2021, the board voted to adopt Northam's transgender model policies in their entirety. The reason given for this decision included the assertion that this board follows the law, is law-abiding. Assuming that this board and current superintendent still hold the same stance, logic would dictate the decision to adopt Yonkin's revised policy should not be met with hesitation. To reiterate, I'm asking you to align the current transgender policies to reflect in its entirety the adjusted policies that have been issued by Governor Yonkin. It is time that Newport News protect every single child equally and fairly and put parents back in the equation. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Section Three, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01, minutes from a closed meeting, August 15, 2023; 3.02, minutes from the regular meeting, August 15, 2023; 3.03, financial reports, including the revenue reports for June and August of 2023, and the expense reports for June and August of 2023; the child nutrition report for June 2023; 3.04, the personnel report; 3.05, Newport News School Board Code of Conduct; 3.06, budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda--
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, item three point oh five. As we have not reviewed it as a board, I'd like to have the board consider removing that item until the board has reviewed it and then we can vote on it.
Okay, I believe we were to have gotten copies of that, of the code of conduct. I did see a copy of it and it had today's date. So let me just, we'll remove it. We'll make sure that everyone does have it and we will move it to to next. There's no reason that it has to pass this. Is there a deadline for the code of conduct? I don't believe that there is.
By agreement, you're removing that item.
Okay.
Or I can, Madam Chair, I can make a motion to amend the motion if that's preferred.
I don't think we need to do that. We'll just remove it and we'll make sure it shows up. So do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And any further discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Aiman.
Four.
Searle Slaw.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, section four, action items on the agenda this evening is four point zero one personnel actions. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent for Gracie Aponte Hart, Assistant Principal at Achievable Dream Middle High School and Dr. Adria Struthers, Principal at Denby High School.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll. Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Aiman.
Four.
Searle Slaw.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Great, thank you all. Dr. Mitchell, would you please introduce the newest employees?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. It gives me great pleasure at this time to ask Ms. Gracie Aponte Hart to stand. I'd like to introduce Ms. Gracie Aponte Hart as the new Assistant Principal of an Achievable Dream Middle and High School. Ms. Aponte Hart has her Master of Art, I mean, excuse me, Master of Education degree from Regent University. She has worked as a world language lead teacher at Woodside High School and she previously also worked as a teacher at Woodside and Warwick High School. Congratulations. And if you have someone special with you tonight that you would like to acknowledge, this is an appropriate time to do so.
I have my mother. Are you here?
Can mom stand up so we can see you? Thank you so much and congratulations. We're really excited for you. Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Adria Struthers. And Dr. Adria Struthers is being recommended or has now been approved as the new principal of Denby High School. So congratulations. Dr. Struthers has a Doctor of Education degree from Regent University. She has worked at Warwick High School since twenty-oh-two in the capacity of English teacher and Assistant Principal. She also previously worked at Denby High School and if I'm not correct, actually graduated from Denby High School. So that's kind of nice that you get to come back full circle to be the principal. So congratulations. And if you have someone special with you tonight that you would like to recognize because we know none of us get here by ourselves, our family has to help us and friends.
I have my wonderfully supportive husband with me tonight. My dad is here to support me as well. Our grandbabies, my lovely daughter had to walk out for a second and then my beautiful principal of Warwick High School is here to support me as well.
Congratulations. You're excited for it.
Well, thank you. And let us be the first to welcome you. Thanks for keeping your expertise here with us. So we will move on to section five, reports and information. We have five point zero one, our back to school report. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you so much. This evening, we will have our Chief of Staff, Mr. Richard Wright, will come to us to do a back to school report. We're excited that we're back in school and he's just going to share a little bit of what's been happening since the beginning of school.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And good evening, Madam Searle Slaw. Vice Chair Dr. Bass, school board members and our community and colleagues. Our executive team welcomed our students and staff into a new school year. Our superintendent, members of the executive team visited all schools during the first three days of school this year. Thanks to our school board members who joined Dr. Mitchell and all of our colleagues. Newport News welcomed twenty-six thousand students to a new school year. Special thanks to our students at Christopher Newport University, Hampton University, Chief Drew and the Newport News Police Department, Army Band, Mayor Philip Jones, Senator Monty Mason, Delian Shelley Simons and all those that helped us welcome our staff. This is exciting. Our Newport News Schools and City School hosted our Huntington Middle School Next Chapter on September seventh at the site of the future Huntington Middle School. Our outdoor event commemorated the proud history of Huntington High School and Middle School and celebrated the launch of the Next Chapter, which includes the construction of a new six hundred student middle school anticipated to open during the second semester of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Event speakers included Newport News Mayor Philip Jones, school board member, Chairwoman Searle Slaw, Vice Chair Dr. Bass. And this was so special, I have to say, it warmed everyone's heart. Joseph Small, a seventh grade student at Huntington Middle School sang a rendition of What a Wonderful World. And I don't think there was a dry eye under that very hot tent. It was amazing. Local and state elected officials, Huntington alumni and staff, we appreciate you. Members of the community all involved, it was a great afternoon. The next day, we were pleased to host Congressman Bobby Scott at Booker T. Washington Middle School on the eighth. Congressman Scott took a tour of Booker T. Washington where he attended elementary school. And he hosted a roundtable discussion on the Rebuild America Schools Act with area superintendents and also our school board members. We thank Congressman Scott for his continued support of Newport News Public Schools. South Board members and the superintendent attended the Southeast Community Day Parade and numerous schools participated in that parade. And then the next weekend, we also had our Denby Day Parade in the northern part of our city. The weather held up well for both weekends. We want to thank our schools, K through twelve that participated and many of our community partners and business partners and also our city council for being present and supportive. We're also happy to share pictures of the newly renovated Warwick High School Governance Health Science Academy Wing and the Senior Center. The Governance Health Science Academy prepares students to fill fill the rising demands of the healthcare industry by combining academic coursework and clinical experiences in a collaborative school environment. Students in the Health Sciences Academy can earn an industry certification on one of four pathways, therapeutic services, support services and health informatics, diagnostic services and also biotechnology research and development. Dedicated labs offer clinical instruction and biomedical exploration and three D software offers students anatomy visualization and vertical dissection opportunities. We're also very happy to unveil our NMPS Campus for Student Success at the former South Morrison Elementary School. The campus has been renovated and still more renovations to come, but right now it's to accommodate the student code of conduct and discipline offense. And also upcoming short-term suspension program will be rolling out. And we also have space for student and family hearings. We'll be working very hard in the future. We have some plans for new professional development space to accommodate large groups. So we're excited about sharing with you those plans in the future. Three hundred and one, I'm going to say it again, three hundred and one new teachers and associate teachers and seven, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-nine support staff joined NMPS this school year. Team NMPS now consists of five thousand eight hundred and one employees dedicated to serving our mission and educating students. Thank you. All students in Newport News Public Schools can receive a healthy breakfast and lunch for free through our community eligibility provision of the USDA. There are a few pictures here that you can check out from that first week of school. We're very proud of this. On average, our dedicated child nutrition team serves over thirteen thousand breakfast meals and more than seventeen thousand eight hundred lunches each school day. Our transportation team greets our students each day and ensures that they are safely transported to and from school. This year, our transportation team has two hundred and nine routes, seven fewer than last year, thanks to efficient routing. We're also continuing our transition to propane buses. Out of a fleet of three hundred and thirty-nine buses, one hundred and forty-one are propane. We are expecting to take delivery of thirteen more in October. Also wanted to share, here's some comments from our students, families and staff that they shared and we wanted to bring this to you from the first week of school. Take a look at the screen. Fantastic, happy, outstanding, phenomenal, smooth, fun, awesome, thoughtful, cheerful. So we had a great kickoff this school year and at this time I can take any questions that you have. And I do have readers now, Madam Chair.
Questions from the board? Comments from the board? And it's been great to see the energy, the excitement.
Absolutely.
The attention to detail in our schools for this year and hats off to our leadership team, Dr. Mitchell, for that. Thank you all. Really appreciate it. All right, I don't have any others. I'm going to move on to five point zero two, the membership report. Five point zero three, the construction report. Board members, you've received a copy of this report. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we're going to move on to five point oh four, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Mitchell, I do, I'm looking to see where my opportunity for the rest of our visitors to get to talk are. Right, it's right after, I've got it reversed. Oh, it's right, yep, right after, okay. All right, Dr. Mitchell, it's you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As was shared by Board Chair Mrs. Searle Slaw earlier in the evening, I have presented draft procedures regarding the treatment of transgender students to the school board for their input. Our legal counsel has affirmed that the draft procedures are consistent with the current Virginia Department of Education model guidelines. I expect to finalize the procedures within the next week. On behalf of our entire leadership team, I thank our students, families and staff for another successful school opening. As you heard during our back to school report, we welcomed our students to the new school year with lots of fanfare. Thanks to Christopher Newport University student athletes, the Hampton University Band cheerleaders and Greek organizations, Chief Drew and members of the Police Department, the Army Band, local elected officials and the school board. Our students, families and staff were welcomed to high cheers, high fives and chants. Special thanks to all of our teachers, our administrators and staff for ensuring that our students had a great first day. I am looking forward to a great year of teaching and learning because that's the business that we are in. Today is National IT Professional Day, which is about our instructional technology staff. Our professional technology staff supports teaching and learning. They also maintain our hardware, software, networks and student information system and ensure our network security. So special thanks to our technology team for all that you do to keep everything running smoothly for our students and staff. I also extend my congratulations to the Menchfield High School Air Force JROTC on the opening of their Center of Excellence. And I see, you can see the pictures on the screen. Over the summer, several cadets, parents and airmen of the Virginia National Air Guard generously volunteered their time to move uniforms, furniture and other equipment into their new space. On August twenty-fourth, they held a ribbon cutting ceremony and offered tours of the Center for Excellence. Thank you to our students, staff and volunteers who helped to make this possible. September fifteenth through October fifteenth is National Hispanic Heritage Month and the school division is recognizing the achievements and contributions of Hispanic American champions who have inspired others to achieve success. Over the next few weeks, our schools will be commemorating the observance of special events and activities and we will share some of them on social media. High school juniors and seniors and families are invited to a financial aid workshop. We're starting early. We know it's September, but we need to help our students get the money. So financial aid workshops on Wednesday, September the twenty-seventh at six PM at Warwick High School. And that is for all students. We invite you to attend the workshop to learn more about the free application for federal student aid grants, loans and other scholarships. For more information, visit our website or contact your professional school counselor. And finally, two very quick reminders. Friday, September twenty-second is a half day for all elementary students for teacher planning. And on Monday, October the second, schools are closed for all students for a full day of teacher planning. And this concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots going on. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair, may I ask just a quick question? Will there be an opportunity for families who maybe can't make the financial aid workshop to get the information?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. Thank you. That's a great question. Thank you.
So we'll move now on to item six. I had my numbers out of order. It's another opportunity to hear from the public. And I want to make sure that we don't have any additional cards other than the ones I have in my hand. So we'll move on to Ursula Hart. Ursula Hart.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Ursula. Hi. I am a mother of three children that attend Richmond Elementary School. I'm also a Navy veteran. I'm here to address safety, protocol and adequate amount of staff available after school hours. On September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, my twin daughter was assaulted. She was struck three times. She was struck in the face. She was struck in the stomach and she also had a water bottle thrown at her. The third grader also assaulted me, also tried to assault my fifth grade student. And he also made a verbal threat that he was going to kill all three of my children. School staff members took a incident report, but however, only notified the student that did the damage to my children. When I got to the school on Friday, I had to call Newport News Police Department. Why? Because there was no staff member according to the security officers that was available to take my concern or to address the issue. When I looked in the window of the school and saw the lady that my son described as the woman that took the report and spoke to the to the third grader and his parents. This is a very serious issue. We just had a very serious issue that happened at Richmond Elementary in January. My son has been attending the school for five years. He also was in school that day when the incident happened. I don't want to be the next victim, okay? I need answers and I need clarity. I am not going to have this as an isolated issue that has been addressed to me by Dr. Perry. I'm not keeping quiet. I need you guys to hear loud and clearly that you have a lot of poor communications that's being deliberate between parent and staff. You have a lot of lazy staff members, okay? I was told that someone would talk to me on Monday. Monday was too far. In between Monday, in between from Friday to Monday, They had my son, Samuel, which is in the fifth grade, as being the person that was assaulted, when it was the kindergarten girl that was assaulted by a third-grade white male. It seems that this child has anger issues, okay? Behavior like this is caught at home first. I don't send my kids to school to be a disturbance to school, nor do I send my kids to school to be a punchbag or a victim, to be victimized. Moving forward, on Monday...
So what I am going to do, because this is serious...
This is very serious.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Wright, Chief of Staff, to step out with you in the back, so that you can share specifically with him the remainder of your concerns, since your time is up publicly. But we really want Mr. Wright to be able to...
And that's what I need. I need help getting, understanding and resolution to my situation.
Dr. Mitchell, follow through.
So again, please take in consideration to what previous members have shared with you, from previous board members, from previous incidents. If you guys do not step up and step in, more seriousness of incidents is gonna occur, and the blood is gonna be on you guys' hands. I need action, and I need help.
Laura Fletcher. Laura Fletcher? Okay, great.
My name is Laura Kirk Fletcher. I'm a graduate of the Newport News Public School System. I attended Sedfield Elementary, Booker T. Washington Middle School, and Warwick High School. I'm here to address Governor Youngkin's transgender policy and speak for the majority of children in our public schools and those coming along behind, being set up to experience the denial of their right of conscience and forced to bend to whims of a small and fractured segment of society. I'm thankful for my brothers and sisters are here, but I do have a little bit of, I'm a little disappointed in Youngkin's approach. James Madison considered the right of conscience to be the most sacred of rights, actually the most sacred of property. He considered conscience to be property. And I take particular issue with the segment of the policy that allows trans children with parental permission to be called by the identity which they presently identify. Attorney General Mieris, in his letter to Governor Youngkin, providing his advisory opinion for these model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in Virginia's public schools, stated that this policy is in accordance with the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause and Title IX. I would disagree on a much higher level. Equal protection should demand the protection of a children's, of children's right of conscience and provide intense, caring intervention for the gender dysphoric child and his or her family. Love demands more, truth trumps tolerance. To allow a small segment of society to quash the conscience of the majority is evil. The Youngkin administration, in fear of legal challenges perhaps, and being named as an, and worried about being named as intolerance, has failed to protect our most vulnerable. In his letter, Mieris references the Virginia Human Rights Act. Throughout the missive, the term safeguard is used liberally, but to not safeguard the most sacred right of conscience in our children is a crime. I urge Newport News Public Schools to draft an even more thorough transparency than that coming down from Richmond, because I feel that parents, teachers, administrators will be forced to submit their conscience to the whims of a family that really needs tremendous intervention. So I ask you to consider that. I, uh, people look to Newport News, public schools, other school systems, smaller school systems, and they wanna follow your lead. And I'm so thankful for the people that are here that have spoken. This is not to hurt a trans child, this is about enabling and coddling gender dysphoria when these people need help, they don't need to be elevated. We need to protect the majority of these children and not allow their conscience to be fractured in the process of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it's Nevert Yarbo? Yep. Sandra Timonello.
I'm the much, much younger wife of the senior citizen. I'm a retired guidance counselor, math teacher. I was in Newport News thirty-five-plus years, and my heart is in the school system, I love the school system. My heart has been broken by a lot of things that have been going on. I think back to when I attended school as a child, and a few of you maybe, where there were two parents at home, and most families, a mom and a dad. We walked to school, we came home in the evening when the lights turned on, we were safe, we didn't have to worry. Our neighbors supported us and also tattled on us. The adult in authority was always right, even when they were wrong. One time, my teacher was wrong, but according to my parents, the teacher was right. Respect was taught, expected, demanded, and disrespect was not tolerated. Times have changed. In many school systems now, not, I'm not saying Newport News, but the trend is the kids come to school, first grade, and they're taught that they can choose their sex. That is ridiculous. I taught, I was a science major too. There is absolutely no more prayer in school. We have the Lord's Prayer, we have the Ten Commandments on the wall, and our teachers taught us to go by those. Think about how it would be today if there was no stealing, if people didn't lie, bear false witness, if they didn't covet, covet what their neighbor had, so there wouldn't be any theft, if they didn't damage, injure people, no guns, no knives. You could have a knife, a gun, it didn't matter, because you wouldn't hurt anyone, if you loved your neighbor as yourself. First commandment, love your Lord your God with all your heart and all your mind. The second is like unto it, love your neighbor as yourself. So I think that this policy, I was devastated with the last one, you know, that the school board rejected, then closed meeting, accepted, and now that's being changed, and I thank you for that. That restores my faith. I think that's very important, and that is a good first step, you know, because children need to be taught the truth, and we need to quit pretending that these ridiculous lies are truths when they're not, when we know in our heart they're not true. There are not sixty sexes, you know, let's get a grip on that. Okay, so I thank you that you are at least trying to start, get a start, and that's a good first start. A better start to continue would be teach the Ten Commandments. I mean, this is a Judeo-Christian-founded country. There's nothing wrong with teaching the Ten Commandments. And remember what the Lord said, Jesus said to his disciples, seventeen, Luke seventeen two, "It would be better for him to have a millstone hung around his neck and were hurled into the sea than for him to cause one of the little ones to stumble." When we tell a girl that she maybe is a boy, and a mastectomy might be a good idea, we're harming her. And that's where the high suicide rates are. Gender dysphoria, as a counselor, I can tell you, that has been dealt with, but this, this reversal of mutilation of the body can't. Thank you.
Jennifer Herget.
Jennifer Herget. Lighten it up just in a moment here. All I needed, need to know, I learned in kindergarten by Robert Fulgham. Share everything, play fair, don't hit people, put things back where you found them, clean up your own mess, don't take things that aren't yours, say you're sorry when you hurt someone, wash your hands before you eat, flush, warm cookies and cold milk are good for you, live a balanced life, learn some and think some and draw and paint and sing and dance and play and work every day some. Take a nap every afternoon. When you go out in the world, watch out for traffic, hold hands and stick together. Be aware of wonder, remember the little seed in the Styrofoam cup, the roots go down, the plant goes up, and nobody really knows how or why, but we are all like that. Goldfish and hamsters and white mice and even the little seed in the Styrofoam cup, they all die, so do we. Everything you need to know is in there somewhere, and it, and it is still true, no matter how old you are, when you go out in the world, it is best to hold hands and stick together. And here we are today. I would have added love of God, family, and country. I also would have changed the cookies and milk part, because although they're really good, they're not really good for you. What I'm saying is, we, as a whole, as a country, as a community, we have got, truly gotten away from the basics. I have two girls and two boys in their twenties now, and wow, did they want their privacy. Somehow, it was okay for them to open my bedroom door without knocking, but they only did it once or twice, they didn't wanna see that again. Watch out if someone didn't knock on their door, they expected and deserved their privacy. My girls would have been mortified if a biological male was in the bathroom at school, they weren't even comfortable with their own bodies yet. I would expect to have been notified immediately. My freedom ends where another's begins, and it goes the same for others. For example, I would be thrilled if my child came home from school and said that her teacher was talking about the Bible, and she wanted to be baptized, which is a huge, beautiful transition, a rebirth. Many nonbelievers feel that the Bible is a moral compass, but although I don't understand it, some parents would prefer that their children aren't taught the Bible. Other parents may not mind if their child is changing for gym with the biological opposite sex, but our family would have been extremely upset, knowing that consideration of us and others was completely disregarded. This was never an issue when I was in school, or when my parents were in school, and all of our ancestors would be horrified by the battles we fight amongst ourselves today. Pass Youngkin's twenty, twenty-three model policy in its entirety. In closing, other than what we learned in kindergarten, morals and values should be left up to the parents to teach.
Good afternoon, Dr. Mitchell and the school board members. My name is Valerie Fashion, and I'm an advocate for the children in the Newport News School District. I'm gonna be changing gears here. I would like to congratulate Dr. Mitchell on becoming our new, new, new Newport News Public School Superintendent. I'm sure your tenure will be successful. Education is the process of acquiring knowledge and information that leads to a successful future, and I'm concerned about the lack of information our children are receiving, and that's because our classrooms are overcrowded, I mean, very overcrowded. I'm concerned, because this district for the past seven years, or seven-plus years, has not been using textbooks for reading, spelling, science, social studies, and math. Why did this district get rid of its textbooks? Parents struggle to assist their children in getting a top-rated education, because zero assignments, reading, writing, spelling, are being given from workbooks and a textbook in the classroom. And I'd like to just share with you a science textbook that my grandson brought home at the end of the year, which is a composition notebooks with items that they were posted in the book. This is a textbook that Newport News was using when my children were in school. I come from a family of educators, and the importance of a quality education was instilled in the children in our community. I grew up in a segregated school districts, and we were given used textbooks from the white schools. Even though the textbooks were used, they provided us with most of the information we needed to become successful. Our teachers also use their knowledge and experience to supplement our education. My questions to you are, how many of you attended schools in the districts that were using textbooks instead of copies of papers from the internet? How many of you attended schools in a district that did not use any textbook? Newport News is a school district practice, using this practice. How many of you attended a school in a district that gave you spelling words every week to study and gave you a spelling test every Friday? How many of you have taken a spelling test without being given the words to study? Newport News Elementary Schools are using this practice. The kids, the parents, they never see the words, but the word comes across the computer screen, and they're expected to recognize the words. How many of you attended schools in a district that told you it was okay for you not to spell your words correctly? I have a problem with that. They cannot go anywhere in this world and misspell these words, simple words, words, pool, cars, just simple things. When was the last time Newport News Schools participated in a local's national spelling bee? Everyone on this school board is an elected official, and it is your fiduciary duty to make sure all of our students attending Newport News Public Schools receive a top-rated education. They need to know the basics, reading, spelling, math, science, writing, history. They even need to learn how to write their names in cursive. All right.
All right.
I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Last card I have is for Mary Voss, and she is not here. So we'll move on to the last portion of our agenda, and for time's sake, the focus of our school board is on students, teachers and students, and the education. So tonight, we are just going to hear from our student representative, and then we will adjourn our meeting.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that the Student Advisory Group on Education applications are due September twenty-sixth. Oh, okay. The, um, the Student Advisory Group on Education application are due September twenty-sixth. It is a, um, we meet every month, and it's where high school students, mainly from ninth to twelfth grade, can provide information to the school division superintendent, Dr. Mitchell, on education initiatives from a student's perspective. Members of the committee meet monthly with the superintendent, oh yeah, and provide input on potential educational issues, and also participate in citywide SCA. And normally, the meetings are from every Wednesday of each, uh, one, Wednesday of each month from three o'clock to four-thirty, and applications, you should get your application from the student support specialist at your, uh, resident, at your high school, and it should be submitted by Tuesday, uh, by Tuesday, September twenty-sixth. So, thank you.
Thank you. So that special date is Tuesday, September twenty-sixth of the due date.
Yes, I have one more thing to add.
Sure.
The application requires, uh, you, students to answer two questions. The questions are, what do you like most about your school? And if you were the principal, what one change would make you to, will make you to enhance the high school experience, and why? And it should be, uh, typed, and I think printed out, and given to the student support specialist.
Great, thank you so much, Erin. So with that, thank you, teachers and staff, for engaging your hearts with our students. Meeting adjourned.